Rowe, call please.
Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bill Costner.
Here.
Alderman John Bug.
Here.
Alderman Freddie Gray.
Here.
Alderwoman Kathy Coe.
Here.
Alderman Kenny Morgan.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Cars.
Here.
City Administrator Scott Collins.
Here.
Thank you. This time I'd like to have a moment of silence and remember the family of Paul James, former council member here who passed away. Thank you. Item three is approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. A, being in regular session June the fourteenth, two thousand and eleven. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Aye, sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. Item B under three is the approval of the minutes for the special council meeting, June the twenty-first, two thousand and eleven. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Aye, sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. There's nothing under proclamations. Item four, item five, communications from Scott Collins, city administrator.
Mayor, we do have all the department reports on Paul here at City Council. As well as financial and board. Because of quick things to bring to town to our public. But they, um, the bank civilization project. Mayor had to sign a contract agreement and Terry reviewed it and it was mailed back today for kickoff. And so they received that and started moving forward again. They're currently doing highway acquisition, which fortunately most of it's already in place. Again, I want to stress the, uh, what's so good about this particular grant is it's normally eighty, twenty, eighty percent federal, ninety, twenty percent local land. Well, because of the work of this board and Church of Nashville and also Don Hurst, you all have been able to prevent the state to pick up our local share. So we're gonna get three new intersections, signal completed, the gathering crosswalks at no cost to our taxpayers from the city. Another grant part of the coming to play right now, of course, is the roadblock grant. The bank civilization is complete. Uh, they completed that, uh, the last week and now they're working on getting the piers set for the, uh, roadblock that is going to meet between the bridge. So with that, uh, all they need to do is a, uh, an extension at a corridor behind the police department and then they'll be ready to start pouring concrete. Once they get to that stage, we'll really move fast into the city without that cost. Uh, the last item to mention is, uh, just a reminder, which showcase on the river is gonna be held August twentieth and twenty first. But actually, we're gonna have a kickoff starting on Thursday, August eighteenth. We're gonna have a Peck rally completed with the band, cheerleaders, and football team and have a bonfire back here in the back and also pay tribute to Larry Wigg. That is just to get the event kicked off for sure. Of course, the next night, uh, Cock County High School will be taking on Plauro County, so we'll all want to go there and cheer on and get rid of it. And then therapy and Sunday, August twentieth and twenty first is just gonna be full of wonderful, wonderful activities. Some new additions that are underway right now. We're in negotiations with the United States Air Force Honor Guard Drill Team. They are the gentlemen that are, and ladies, that are in charge of guarding the tenement that I'm on the subject. And we're very close to getting our stormwater drain grant. What are we standing on there? We have been, uh, talking to officials in Nashville trying to get an answer. Uh, from everything we can gauge right now, it is in the hands of the government. So we have asked, uh, our state representative to pursue blocking on our rehab because everyone knows how badly we need it, uh, the recent incident in Indian and English Hills as a prime example. And as a result of that, David and Ben and myself, uh, next week, we're gonna be blocking that entire section all the way through there because the recent rain, uh, about ten days to two weeks ago caused some serious erosion. I've talked to two or three of the property owners. So we're gonna start seeing what we can do right now and go ahead and get a certain leave and then start, uh, continuing to pursue the grant.
And I did explain to several people during the, the four-inch rain episode we had that it was our intention with the other grant when we did the downtown that there was to be enough money, but the complications we ran into and the expense of drilling under the railroad tracks and various things that went wrong, that all of the money from that grant had to be spent just to complete the project here. And I think we added thirty, thirty-four thousand or something like that to it in order to be able to complete this project, so.
Yes, sir.
But four inches of rain is, at one time, is, that, that can cause flooding everywhere, so.
And we did go for the full five hundred thousand in town.
Yes.
It's a lot of loss, so that should address it all the way from Cosby Highway all the way down to where everybody, just to go.
And this report, Scott, that we got from T-Dot on the road projects in Cock County, which also affects Newport, uh, I'll be giving the media a copy of that. That'll be printed in the paper. Don, did you receive that?
Yes, sir.
You, you got that? So if you already released that to the media to, okay, I'm gonna, I'll give them a copy of that so they can, and it kind of lets the public know what the, the road situation, the bridges and so forth, its plan, the, the bypass and all of that information. Thank you, Scott. Uh, appointment of boards and commissions. Uh, item A is appointment of, uh, Glenn Moore Smith back to the beer board. Is that an appointment I make, Scott? I've always been.
Yes.
Okay. So we, we have Glenn Moore, uh, that will be appointed back to the beer board. Uh, the planning commission, Jim McSwain, will return to that position as well as Tommy Crowder to his position on the planning commission. And, uh, at this point in time, we're not ready to do the library board or the animal control board yet. That'll probably be at the next council meeting. Under new business, item A is the second reading of ordinances, two thousand and eleven, dash zero five, the digital zoning map. You have a section you're, you're to read, Terry.
Yes, sir. Mayor, uh, I would be heading of that ordinance. It's number two thousand and eleven dash zero five, an ordinance to adopt a new zoning map for the city of Newport, Tennessee, and to rescind all other zoning maps. This would be the second reading.
Second reading. Do we have a motion to approve on the second reading?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second? Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no?
Mayor.
Yes.
You've been served. Let me say to you, that motion.
Item B is the second reading of ordinance two thousand and eleven, dash zero six, Newport Grammar School budget amendment.
Mayor, that's the title of that ordinance is ordinance number two thousand and eleven dash zero six, an ordinance to amend Newport Grammar Schools budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and ten, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven.
Is that the one of the budget amendments?
Yes.
Okay.
Second reading.
Okay. Gotcha. Have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Aye, sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no? Item C is the first reading of ordinance two thousand and eleven, dash zero eight, the Newport Grammar School budget.
Mayor, reading that into the record, it's ordinance number two thousand and eleven dash zero eight, an ordinance to establish Newport Grammar Schools budget appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and eleven, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve.
Do we have a motion to approve that on the first reading?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Aye, sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no? Item D is the first reading of ordinance two thousand and eleven, dash zero nine, signed regulation provisions.
Mayor, that's ordinance number two thousand and eleven, dash zero nine, an ordinance to amend the zoning regulations of the city of Newport to include new guidelines for digit, digital reader boards, banners, and freestanding signs.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no? Item D is resolution two thousand and eleven, dash fourteen, subdivision regulations and certificate of approval for recording.
No, there's no, no, that's just, uh.
Do we have a motion on four?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Aye, sir.
Any discussion?
Can we get, uh, just get to tell us a little bit more about this?
Mark.
Yes. Let me see what you're trying to talk about.
He might need to touch on four of these.
Yes.
I agree.
But they were, they were approved by the planning commission, right, Mark?
Yes, they were. They, uh, this was recommended by the local planning officers and one of their final, uh, work, work thing for the city. And, um, this is just a, um, a, a certificate of approval as in, where, um, the subdivision class has preliminary plan approval and final plan approval, the way that property is divided up with the road, the drainage, uh, curbing if that's required, um, by way of the developer. And, uh, if the, uh, infrastructure is not complete, at the time that they want to start trying to sell properties in this development, this is a, um, method to allow, uh, maybe it's a, uh, two different, two different types of security, I can't think of what they're called at the moment, but they're standing procedure.
Letters of credit.
Letter of credit and there's no, um, similar to that. That would allow him to post a bond in a certain amount equal to a hundred and fifty percent of the, uh, required or the estimated cost to put in the road. Probably, uh, compacted six-inch base with two-inch binder on top of, uh, two-inch of horse, uh, but the, uh, horse, uh, binder underneath. This is a guarantee that this is ended for a period of two years or longer, whatever the planning commission should decide so that we, uh, have opportunity to go in and fix it, improve it, do it, if the developer fails to do it. The letter of guarantee. Any questions or anything confused, everybody?
Don't have questions on the other three.
Can we get copies of this?
I don't choose already to get a copy.
Is this, well, we've got some resolution, just put a lot more caution in the bill for it.
Well, it's actually, all it does is add one more inch of binder on top of it, but it also outlines upper compaction of the gravel base. Uh, we had a issue that was in a planting region that, um, was compacted and partially paved and then the developer, um, uh, didn't complete it as, uh, proponents in the county, road superintendent approved the road design. So in effect, with these in route to our city, road superintendent saying that is acceptable now to be able to come into city road system, although it was on the county side. Um, I don't know if y'all remember, we had quite a bit of hoopla over that couple of years ago. But, uh, we're trying to keep that from ever happening again.
And my understanding, Mark, this would bring the city in compliance with what the county requires?
The county only requires one inch of binder and the city, Ben, he exchanged our planning commission and suggested a two-inch binder instead. And, uh, it, uh, the design, road design was a bit, uh, what, maybe even thought was appropriate for our street level designs.
Is this in any one particular area?
No. This would be any future subdivision. That requires a street, I think, of it. If you, uh, you have all your properties front on the street and you sold to that, they all have at least forty feet of street funds, uh, it doesn't apply to that.
Would, yeah, but also apply to a street, whether there's a housing development being built there or not. Let's say, I don't know the situation where there's two or three houses on a street off of, uh, uh, Lord Corey Road.
Yes.
That had called me about what they needed to do to have the road in the city. So this, this new regulation of the two-inch binder and so forth would apply to that if they would have to have it fixed to those specifications before the city would ever consider taking those houses in.
That, that would be correct. So that it's, if, this would be fixed appropriately to subdivision code, uh, so we don't have to worry about it all on our, assuming you take over maintenance of it.
And the property I was talking about is, it's privately, it's privately owned right. It's, but, you know, I think it's in the city limits of the property is probably, but it's a private ground. It's not a city street, but it'd have to be brought up to those specifications before the city would, uh, keep the street.
Yes. Um, uh, do you think there's a, I think that would be another home point for the actual ones of the.
No, on Lord Corey Road, there, I think there's some, three or four houses off of a, a, a road. That I think they're in the city, but the road, their driveway's a private road, it's not a city street.
Yes.
And I, I told them they'd have to bring it up to the specifications and then go before the planning commission and then that would be brought to the city council to be, to see if it could be approved to be taken to the city, but the, the road.
Uh, there's some apartments down in there.
I think so.
I would like to ask if we can put this off till next month so we can get the same information that he had read to us there because what we've got in front of us doesn't say any much of what he's saying there. If we're gonna pass the resolution, I would like for all that to be in that top four man of what we're gonna approve.
And we would need it on all four resolutions. Okay?
Yes.
Let's just do that.
We, we, we got a motion.
We got a motion.
Aye, sir.
Okay. Any discussion?
We need to, either vote on it or withdraw. Somebody made a motion.
Not receiving a motion.
Yeah, who made the motion? Um, I, I put it way too long. It's kind, it's come from the planning commission, it's come from the state, is that right, Mark?
Yes.
So at that point, I mean, it's been in the book, I think.
I'm not comfortable voting on a resolution that we don't have drawn out with everything in it.
Well, there's, the four different resolutions, uh, sort of combining all four together. The one sheet, uh, I don't know if this was, uh, restricted with your manual or not. Uh, the resolution to amend subdivision regulations for purpose of implementing additional requirements for paving the base, including the binder. And it gives a, uh, description of the paving base. Uh, it's got five paragraphs. Is it actually written? Did you like it?
It's in here.
The detail, the sheet's in there. It's in there.
Item four explains the paving base, um, as well as the seven and a half inch top stone, uh, down to any clothing belts. And about the moisture compressions would be five percent. Spreading the stone to be uniform over the area, uh, shall not be dumped in piles. After spreading, stones will be rolled until thoroughly compacted, compacted thickness showing no less than six inches. And in addition, a two-inch comb for which that's what the concrete shall be applied prior to the wearing surface being applied. The, uh, previous regulations said the, uh, six-inch compact stone as well as the two-inch, uh, under binder, I can't see what that's called. Under the binder, I think, or the binder being, uh.
Y'all want to post on it? Do y'all want to vote?
Yeah, I'm voting.
Do I make the motion?
Freddie, do you, do you need more than?
I think, I'd like to ask some more. Is that a real drain? Is that, is that true? Scott and I went and looked at one time, and it's, uh, it's, we have a grid, uh, the drainage, I don't know if we've been working on it.
But this, this, this requires a grid, two piles, and if it was, every time it rains, it washes the rest away. This is strictly on the, uh, a lot of public, uh, or, uh, down.
If the second's okay, I'll receive my motion.
I agree, I agree. And I'm gonna rescind it.
Okay.
Do we need to put that on the workshop?
Mm, definitely.
Taking no action. I'm under the assumption then that we're not taking action on C, E, and H as well since it's all basically the same thing?
It's one big thing, it's one, Mark, I think.
Okay, we'll just. So we move on to item I. The consent agenda items, we have a motion to approve those.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second, sir?
Aye, sir.
Any discussion?
I, I want to withdraw A from the, uh.
To withdraw it?
Yes. As I'm missionary.
Okay.
Because we're going out of town this afternoon.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, the consent agenda, who made that motion?
I did.
Your motion will exclude that one bit.
That's okay.
And the second as well. All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no? I hear that. Item ten, ten is, uh, road salt bids.
Mayor, I think we're, we, uh, join in, uh, state, two, four, we worked with two in October on the, uh, third of, these Tennessee municipal and, and the city of Newport, we paid two bids. And these bids are based off of town, Culver, Culver Hall, it's seventy dollars, ninety-nine dollars, three hundred. Northside paid one dollars and one cent. And American Hall, thirty-six dollars, and Newport, it's a recommendation from staff is to accept low bid from labor and holding contractors in the amount of seventy dollars, ninety-nine dollars.
Okay. What's your pleasure? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Aye.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no? I hear that. This time, uh, Sarah Selfie would like to say something to the council. You can, have whatever you feel comfortable doing.
I want to thank everyone at the council and all of you for, of course, supporting me as I completed this to the city with your help, advise, and ad page. I was able to receive twelve hundred dollars in scholarship money and also receive a lot more. I received a thousand dollars for my food service award. I won that and I won a thousand for just competing. So I just wanted to come here and thank you all personally, follow your support, and I really appreciate it.
Sarah, we appreciate you representing Newport as well as you did.
Well, I was, I was so blessed to have the title of Newport and City, and to be able to represent where I'm from. I'm so glad that I was able to represent Newport and I appreciate all of your support.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, I appreciate all of your, uh.
You keep going, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, Sarah. Comments from citizens?
Susan Delphine, yeah, folks, we're open that out and move this and pass that up again. This concern is a situation, law and legal situations, come up about the management of Newport Animal Shelter. Policy note is, we have national recognition, thank y'all for your partnership and wanting for y'all work up there. I want to start square again. We've got, I called me and said he wanted to, the manager of Newport Animal Shelter. I was shocked, I said, oh, wow. He said, well, they have smart problems and stints and I like the insurance and I think I can do the job. I said, well, if you go and work there a week, you know. Well, we do that. Then Scott Collins told me he was going to run an ad for management of Animal Shelter. I was half surprised, but I saw it was coming. We ran the ad, we got the applicants. I've been here ten years and I've sat on all the boards since they headed them up to screen applicants and make recommendations for hiring a Newport Animal Shelter manager. We asked for the same group for this one. I did, I got, uh, the story devil, who's a tire executive before, and, um, they're all good. We did interviews and we all recommended a young lady named Miss Hensley, who's here tonight, who was able to volunteer at working the shelter. Scott said, well, I've had to make a decision and I'm going to make a decision, Julia and Carter, but if it doesn't work out, I promise you, she's got the job, all she gotta do is come and apply. I'm gonna come, come and fill out the papers and, uh, that'll be it. So be it. I worked hard with Luke and I got a call, understood that they're all good and asked that I come to the city because Luke was not working out. They said that he wasn't still at work, they couldn't keep him there, he was there, he was in the parking lot, talking about real estate. I had a lady, I asked her if she wanted to come with me, I made a phone call with the city. She, in essence, we settled on another lady to come, who's here tonight, heads out volunteer group, which became real Scott, and no uncertain term told what the problem was. I told Scott that one of the problems was that Luke was doing his time calls, he was putting out a handout, he stood for the most part, and made a serious doubt that he spent more than two hours a day at the county shelter. Luke was there, he was in the parking lot most of the time, talking about real estate. They were highly incensed and I said, Scott, we need to undo this, this is a fact after everybody, we need for Luke to go. And so Luke went. I called Miss Hensley and told her of the decision that she needed to come and talk to the city. I made a phone call with Scott Collins. Then I met with Scott and said, absolutely, you got the job and you can tell her a salary. She said, well, when can I start work? He said, now that's one thing. I said, Luke, I've got the wrong way that because party rules. I said, well, I'm sure you already done all that, but, but, please just go along with me, it's just, just for appearances. And she asked, when should you come and work? He said, be ready to go and work right after the fourth of July. Well, I didn't like it, but that's what he told us, ready to. Ran the ads, I cut all the ads, I asked Dr. Hood and Martin that man, was, was, was dis-. a shame to look at him and view him as a bad, and then was in, committed another application, but that made the hire, viewed all of this stuff. Well, I called and asked, would you come down and do paperwork? And she, the lady said, well, I said, you need to get on with this, this young lady, this young lady has quit her job, she's depending on the commitments that you made to her, a legal and moral commitment. There's witnesses to this, by the way. Well, I tried to make arrangements, and I was told, well, there's two parks to see, and the one lady's on vacation, so could we wait? I said, well, if you call her, I'd like her to help her with done, but they wanted to wait. I said, well, okay. And I talked to Miss Brandy, before she'd dig up on my head. Nobody called Brandy, I called her, and then I called, talked to Scott Collins. He said, well, now, we're hiring you, please, and you didn't interview any of those other people, so we can hire. I said, that is absolutely ludicrous, you are discrediting yourself, you made a commitment to this young lady, she's a better volunteer, we're all voting for, but hire her, and she quit her job, depending on your word, and your legal commitment. I got no satisfaction there. That's why I'm here today. A legal commitment was made, you assure her that she's quit her job, we definitely need a manager of that we can work with, and here we are, there's this lady, she looks at me, everything I'm, everything I'm telling you, I've got witnesses to, sometimes as many as three. So you don't just have to take my word, even though I think my word is generally pretty good, always pretty good. It's been a real total disaster. We need a, bought that man's animal shelter, everybody knows that, somebody that we can work with, that I personally want to form a group to overlook, so I know every month where we're on the budget. I don't take all the guesswork out of this, I'm sick and tired of, where are we on the budget, nobody's buying no time. I've had hundreds and thousands of employees, I know how to run a country, I'm in form, general group, that will say, that we will know exactly where we're on the budget, every month. We'll know what every expenditure is, where is the budget? But this is something that we've got, that's never really been done properly. We've got a wonderful shelter, we've got a lot of wonderful volunteers, but this is a disaster. This young lady has quit her job, she was given a commitment, Scott said, Luke, you didn't do this, it's totally untrue. And I urge anybody, the ones I'm doing this, the witnesses, that I'm telling you exactly the truth that happened. This young lady quit her job, she's here now, I urge y'all to direct him to do what he's committed to do, and put this young lady to work right now. She's got family, and he made a legal commitment, we hired her, told her, be ready to go to work. And she's done that, she's quit her job, and here we are. So in essence, that's what I'm asking you to do, the right and the legal thing. I want Terry Hurst to tell you, that when you tell somebody that you've got a job, in essence, quit your job, be ready to go to work, and react on that, you say, well, I'm not so sure, yada yada. That is not acceptable. It's not right. And I would urge you, when I ask you any questions, is this lady's here, is anyone asking you questions? I've got other witnesses, Mr. Devil, heard everything Scott said. And I'm deeply troubled by somebody acting in that manner, it's very uncomplimental, creates a liability for the city, that nobody has a need. So I ask you any questions you have, is this lady's here? But I urge you, write this long before you go with anybody.
Council, y'all have any questions? This could be a situation that we could put on a workshop to discuss.
The young lady's quit her job, she's suffering damages from it, she acted in good faith, she had a legal and binding commitment, everything she said without any encouragement. She's a shelter volunteer, she's, her reference is checked out beautifully. All three of us voted for her. So here she is sitting now, depending on what we committed to do. And would you propose to go back and pay her the salary that she was supposed to get by asking for? Because she's sitting here with a bad mind, and she's suffering damages. So to put it all off as a little workshop, I appreciate what you're saying, but that doesn't answer the problem, this woman, we need a legal management, she, her reference is to pass, so we're all voting for myself, Mr. Devil, and Dr. Hood. And she acted in good faith, she quit her job, and here we sit. So I'm urging you to act soon in a workshop, because if Scott Collins, unless he wants to review what I'm saying, then he won't do.
What I can do, Robert, is ask council if they want to waive the rules and put it to action now, since it's not an agenda, Adam, does, do we have a motion to the council to waive the?
I don't know by charter if we can force Scott to hire anybody.
Scott's got the...
He has old charter, it's his. Another charter, he doesn't hire and fire. I don't know if we have the right, legally right, to force him to hire anybody.
We do not. The charter, the charter gives the city administrator the absolute right, as far as hiring and firing.
So I'll ask him that. It's hiring. I don't think it's a question you need to ask Scott.
We know, this way you should...
I think if you want to speak with him and the lady about the position, then that's fine, but I don't think this is the time or place to do a hiring or a firing.
Well, I'm saying controversy.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's, it's more, it's much, you say it's gonna be more of a controversy in this area than you, you two sitting down with, I don't know who Ms. Hensley is, but...
Ms. Hensley's right here. Right here.
But I think it's something that you and Scott and Ms. Hensley need to sit down and discuss.
I hope we can appreciate the damages that she's going through, because she took the word and acted accordingly, and it's really, really morally wrong that she be suffering these circumstances.
And if I can work it in my schedule, I'd be glad to sit down with y'all too.
Would you do that?
We'd go ahead too. We'll try to get together, work out a suitable date for all of us.
Do you have any more time?
Sure.
But please, we need a, we need a manager, this young lady had a legal commitment, you know, that we need to resolve this.
We'll try to work out something.
If we, if you all voted for, for her, then how did they end up disagreeing?
Because Scott Collins, on his own side, he was Luke Goddard's friend. We can announce, for myself, and Dr. Hood, and Mr. Devil, who's here, voted for this woman because of the qualifications, and a volunteer work for the shelter. There was no question. And this is the first time in ten years that I've handled these, I've really committed to hire Dr. Hood. I've never had the votes rejected in this manner, but so do it.
I just want to say, there is something that I do want to clear up. First, I will say that, yes, I did feel like Brandy was my, my choice when we interviewed. And I mean, I say that openly, whatever, no problem. I did not call Robert, though, to tell him that Luke was not doing a good job, now he may have asked me, but I did not take that step to call him and tell him that. I wanted to make that clear, because I try to keep everything as, you know, upfront and straight, the facts straight as possible. I will say, though, that when Luke was hired, and that definitely is, Scott Collins is our city administrator, under our charter, that's the way it's supposed to work, that's our chain of command. He's the one that makes that decision, and then, of course, the city council, you know, you're above that. I will say that although Brandy was my first choice, and I would still stand behind her as a choice, I think she would make a great director. But I really did not like the way that Luke was treated, essentially. I think that he was blackmail, I think he was bullied, he was threatened with articles in the newspaper that would have been defamatory against him, and I don't blame him for quitting. I really don't. I don't think that the process was followed with his resignation or getting rid of him, whatever. Yes, I did have problems with Luke, I don't think that he really understood the job, understood the demands, understood what was needed. And that was frustrating to me, it was frustrating to the staff, but I am a firm believer in process, and I don't think, I really regret that process was not allowed to be handled with Luke. Like I said, I do stand behind Brandy, I think she's a great candidate, but I guess that's all I have to say.
All right, this, this called me, she's our coordinator for all the volunteers, and said, Carol, one of her talked to me about giving them a, because of this is a disaster.
Yeah, Robert, we probably don't need to do this, okay? If they want to speak, we can let them speak. Does any, does anyone else have any comments concerning this issue?
Mr. Brown, you need to sit down.
Is anyone else concerned of this issue want to speak?
It's just, yes, Dr. Hood didn't ask me to simply contact Robert, because there was an issue with Mr. Goddard as being the director, and things were heading south so rapidly, and something had to change. And I think that Doc Hood wanted that addressed quickly. I think that it would have been great if we had had time, perhaps, to go through, whatever the lengthy process would have been, that, I'm not aware of what exactly had to be done, but the way I understood what Doc wanted us to do would be to go to Mr. Collins, that's the understanding that I had.
So the thing was, to talk with Robert, to call, you know, friends, about talking him about that rumor that he, I talked this rock with, and conversations about issues that we were having, and I didn't think that they were being hurt. So what happened, though, is Robert has gone in this picture, that is, it changed, what I mean, a bullying situation is what it felt like. I don't think I, but I think that the next step would have been, what I wanted to see was going to stop and talking about that, this procedure, but I had no intention for Robert to go and call the newspaper, to call the newspaper.
They told me Scott Collins, and I talked to you, and asked, you didn't want to talk to me, you were with this.
Okay, any other comments from any citizens? We have a motion to adjourn.
I have one thing I want to tell everybody. I have been working on the bid for the city truck, for the dump truck.
Okay.
I come in please.
Committee person.
As a committee person, so I have been talking with this trucking company recently, and they all want to provide a bid for the dump truck, and David, I have been working with David Hill, because Mr. Hicks never returned any of my calls, but that's fine. But I've worked with David Hill, and I think that we have got a good trip on that, that David can tell you more about it, if you'd like David.
Can we do it in workshop?
Sure, sure, can we do it?
Sure, we're just gonna do that in the workshop, David.
Yes.
Dr. Hood, thank you for all the work you do at the animal shelter.
Yes.
And it's been ongoing for years, thank you, and we truly mean it, our partners.